You can start.
Okay.
I'm on.
Very good, thank you. All right, I am Mayor Meg Grenier and as it is six o'clock, I will call this meeting to order. For anyone outside the village staff who is attending the video conference, I would ask if you would please identify yourself.
Eric Johnson from Chasen.
Thank you.
Mike McKay.
Thank you.
Oh, is that Mike McKay and?
I don't know who said something after that.
Jeff McDonald, 3T.
Tim O'Brennan.
Scott Townsend, 3T.
Matt Brobston, the LA group.
Anybody else?
Ethan Gaddy with the Chasen Companies.
I know there's others out there, but we'll just move forward then. Right, and I ask that everyone please mute their microphones. And I will now do roll call of village staff. Deputy Mayor Eileen Nichol.
Present.
Trustee Diane Foley. Trustee Seth Harris.
Present.
No response on Foley?
No.
No Foley, okay.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Brian Marsh.
Present.
Clerk Don Hannerhand.
Present.
Village Attorney Steve Raphus.
Present.
On behalf of the village board, I would ask all residents that we please keep our first responders, all essential workers, and those affected by this pandemic in our thoughts and prayers. Pursuant to Governor Cuomo's Executive Order number 202.1 issued on March 13th, 2020, suspending Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by law, it allowed the public to not be physically present at the meeting, but allow the public to listen to and view such meetings via teleconference call or video conference while recording and later transcribing the meeting. Village Menance Board of Trustees semi-monthly meeting is being held via Google Meets video conference to protect public safety and welfare during this COVID-19 pandemic. In an effort to conduct this meeting, effectively, we ask those in attendance, please mute your microphones. And right now, we are going to head into the public hearing, which will be the start of the meeting. So Don, if you want to read the notice.
The Village of Menance Comprehensive Plan Committee is pleased to announce the publication of the draft Comprehensive Plan. This is the first complete draft of the Comprehensive Plan released to the public. Many residents have contributed to the process and answering to the community survey, attended open houses, participated in interviews. Residents are encouraged to review the plan on the website in advance of the public hearings that was set forth on May 4th, village board meeting at 6:00 PM. It's all village board meetings are presently being held via video conference. It's very important for residents to submit comments and inquiries in advance of the May 4th meeting. Please see website for instructions on submitting comments to either Ethan Gaddy at 518-824-1942. To join the video hearing, go to GoogleMeets.com. It's all to you, Meg.
Okay, Diane Foley is present. I'm just not sure what's going on with her microphone. All right, Ethan, you want to take this over and see what, let us know what's going on here.
And you're mute.
You're muted, Ethan.
Oh, there he is.
All right, thanks. So can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yep. Is that full screen or is it just part of the screen?
Part of the screen, but it's legible.
Ethan, do you want me to present it? Would that be easier if I do it as the slides at full?
Yeah, there's, that'd be great. There's just four slides here.
Yep, I have the presentation. Let me just present my screen.
And did you receive the other presentation as well?
I believe so.
Great.
We'll make sure that that is what it is and we'll go from there. Is this what you want to see?
No, actually, the other one, that is for the applicants at 35 Broadway.
I didn't get, I only sent them the one, Ethan. I thought they were both the same.
That one right there.
I see it, yeah.
Okay.
Hold on one second, it'll be, I'll present this whole thing, so it'll be full screen. There you go.
Okay, cool. Yeah, thanks, everyone, for taking the time to, you know, be here for this. It's been a long process. So tonight, just want to give you a quick overview of, you know, the Comprehensive Plan, you know, what it is, the process that went into it, and then some of the outcomes and the next steps. So a Comprehensive Plan, as most of you know, is the guiding policy document for a municipality. To date, Menance had not ever had a Comprehensive Plan. There was a series of other, you know, corridor plans, other transportation plans, but nothing holistic. So three years ago, the village set out with University of Albany to develop this plan. It's very holistic. It touches on everything from land use, you know, environmental resources, parks, open space, infrastructure. It's like, so it is a Comprehensive Plan. So the next slide here. The process. So what goes into creating one of these really big sort of inventories of what's going on in the community? It takes extensive public input. Starting three years ago with the University of Albany, they did a really rigorous process, which involved public workshops, a community survey, stakeholder outreach, in which they interviewed various people throughout the community. And then the actual community survey had really good response rate, far, far greater than you generally anticipate with a community survey. In addition to the public outreach, we also did land use analysis, looking at environmental, you know, constraints to development. Then we looked at, you know, what could be built under current zoning regulations and just to get a really big idea of what could happen to Menance in the future. So what are the outcomes? The next slide here. So based on all of this research that we did, this engagement with the public, the detailed analysis of, you know, environmental conditions and land use, we basically discovered, well, we present a series of recommendations that cover everything from infrastructure, land use, parks and open space, quality of life, amongst others. These recommendations are intended to sort of pursue the vision that was laid out by residents and contained in the plan, we have probably, you know, dozens of recommendations that address various topics. Because this planning process lasted so long, we actually had some outcomes in the, sort of in the meanwhile. Some of what we heard at the start of the planning process was that, you know, food access was a huge issue. We secured funding for technical assistance from the CDRPC. And a food access report was just published. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to view it yet. But that was finalized, I think, maybe even late last month. The next step for that is for the CDRPC, the Capital District Regional Planning Committee, to actually provide some information for the community in form of a newsletter about food access. So that was a direct offshoot of the Comprehensive Plan. Earlier.
Just to let you know, they had a few more corrections to make on the food.
You muted mute, or Megan?
Sorry. So they had to make a couple extra corrections on the food report, so it isn't official yet.
Okay, so eventually that will be a very useful document for the village that came out of these issues that were discovered as part of the Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, the village applied for and received CDTC funding for their linkage program, which has resulted in, you know, a program for the village to actually pursue zoning updates, which is very important. Sort of follow up for a Comprehensive Plan. And then also, the CDTA has sort of increased their corporation, cooperation with the village to help understand how the BRT line, the Bus Rapid Transit line, is going to have an impact on the existing transportation systems and land use in the village. Can coordinate with these guys. They have funding through a federal program. To do this coordination will help align the village's infrastructure spending and beautification efforts with their efforts. So, for example, if they're going to try to do a park and ride somewhere, the village is going to understand, hey, we have to, you know, consider what we're doing around that area. So, long story short, to the next slide, outcomes. So, the outcomes of this plan, tonight, the village is going to vote to adopt or not adopt the Comprehensive Plan. This will be the guiding policy document for the village. It serves to capture residents' vision for the future. You know, if the boards face difficult decisions, you know, faced with, you know, pretty big picture decisions to make, they can refer back to the Comprehensive Plan, the vision contained therein, and see how their decisions aligns with that vision. And as I said before, a Comprehensive Plan covers a very wide range of topics, and there's a lot of recommendations in this plan. One of the next steps that the village should consider taking, actually, if you go to the next slide on this one, Seth, would be a form, yes, to form an implementation committee. This would be either a committee that was appointed by the town or the village board, excuse me, or a volunteer group that's less formal, but essentially what they would be doing is looking at the Comprehensive Plan, looking at some of the recommendations, and then helping to prioritize some of these action items. It takes a lot of ongoing effort to stay on top of funding opportunities, to pay attention to changing conditions in the village. Having a group of residents that are, that are solely concerned with following through on the big picture vision could be very useful. I think the village board has a lot on its plate. They serve as Board of Trustees and also the Planning Board. You guys wear a lot of hats. It's worth considering having a group of engaged citizens follow through with the plan. In other communities, it's been very successful. And then the next step with the Comprehensive Plan is to update your zoning regulations. By New York State law, your land use regulations have to be in accord with a well-considered plan, and the Comprehensive Plan is that. Luckily, the CDTC has already authorized funding to do that. So as a village board, I think you're all going to want to be paying attention to this process and start thinking about that now. Because a lot of what's in the Comprehensive Plan will serve as the basis for these zoning updates. And then the third next step I've got listed here is to explore funding opportunities for high priority projects. You know, as a small municipality, you have limited, you know, funding mechanisms. Thankfully, New York State is still doing their annual grant funding program, which is the consolidated funding application process. It requires, many of these projects require matching amounts, so that's something the villages want to think about, whether they set aside money or volunteer hours to match these grants from the Department of State, you know, economic, Empire State Development, any of these various granting agencies that make money available to municipalities. And I think right now, the state is still moving forwards with their grant funding opportunities for this year, and those applications are due in July. So it's probably, it's a good time for the village to start thinking about, you know, what projects come out of the Comprehensive Plan, you know, what are top priority, and then moving towards figuring out how to capture some of that state grant funding. So in the plan itself, we have a 40 or 50-page front-end document. It outlines the process that we went through to come up with the vision, goals, and recommendations. So that's a concise, you know, 40-some-odd-page document, visually rich, has concept drawings in it. And then the backend of the plan is about a 500-page appendices, which includes some more of the detailed demographic, physical analysis. It captures some of the public workshops and other stakeholder interviews. And that's not light reading necessarily, but it's an important backup for the plan, so. Then it all serves as valuable ammunition for grant writing. So tonight, with the adoption of a Comprehensive Plan, it puts you in a much more competitive position with the grant funding, just in terms of, you know, communities that have a clearly articulated vision for the future stand a better chance of getting funding from the state as opposed to having some ad hoc idea for a project. You know, in addition, it serves as a useful tool to communicate with potential developers. Duncan Barrett, who's actually here on the line tonight, took part in one of the focus group sessions with developers and, you know, one of the big takeaways we heard from those meetings was, you know, when we're interested in municipality and we're thinking about revitalization, what we really want to hear is, you know, what's the vision for the community? You know, what is it that they want? And with a Comprehensive Plan, it's a very useful tool to show what that vision is. So I haven't received any comments via the website over the course of the past month. But if any trustees have any questions or comments, I'm willing to take any regarding the plan.
All right, why don't we open it up to the village board, and then if they don't have any questions, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody got anything?
Ethan, it's Brian. If you were to talk about, like, from after doing this exercise, what would be the number one important thing that you think we should consider? You know, what's the biggest, the biggest impact of implementing this going to be for the village in the next five years?
That's a good question. I think a lot of the efforts focused in the Broadway corridor will be really big. Revitalization has been on the tip of everyone's tongue for the past 20 years. I think doing the zoning update in accord with the Comprehensive Plan would probably be one of the most powerful things that you could do right off the bat. It's already a project that's funded. I think pursuing it, forming a committee and staying really engaged with the process will have a very big impact. And also, any sort of public investment that's made in the Broadway corridor sends a signal to, you know, private development that, you know, the vision for the community is being implemented, that you care about the corridor, you want to see things happened. So I think, you know, doing the land use update, focusing on the Broadway corridor, I think those are some of the bigger takeaways from it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else on the board?
So I have a quick question. So Ethan, you know, I liked what you'd said with that, you know, certainly focusing on the Broadway corridor. So our next step, if we accept this, would be to get together an implementation committee?
Yes, you don't necessarily have to do that, but I would recommend having a group of citizens. There were plenty that were activated during the planning process to sort of carry these things forward.
Are there, are there specific, besides just putting a call out there to residents, are there specific types of people that you want to make sure that you have on this in order to make sure that you have the expertise that you need, as well as the different constituent bases?
I think you would want a representative cross-section of the community. You know, you have, I think, you know, you have a really large portion of, you know, people that are involved, multifamily housing in the village. I think that's about 60% of the population. It would be interesting to have that perspective. Business owners, you know, people that are involved in the community, people that care about the community. I think that's probably the most important thing. You know, you have a population of about 4,000, so trying to get all the technical expertise is a good step, but finding someone with the passion and willingness to, you know, attend meetings and follow it through, that would probably be just as important.
Okay. Yeah, my thought was, because we, on the Comprehensive Plan, it was myself and Eileen from the board. We had the superintendent from Menance School, residents, we had a teacher from Menance School, and some other people. My thought would be to continue with that group, plus expand on it with others, like Ethan just talked about, business owners, more representation from the apartments, whatever the case might be. And right now, having that grant opportunity with, for the zoning is going to be key, so we'll be moving forward with that as well.
And I agree. I think those are all good, good people to have on there, and I think, you know, certainly, you know, we'll put it out to to businesses and residents. And my thought is that once, once the time period is over to volunteer, you know, if we're, if we're still lacking in certain areas, like, let's say, for argument's sake, we don't have anyone from Sage Hill or Roost Estates, you know, maybe that's where we try to recruit from those areas, just to make sure that, that we have a good representative body.
Right.
This seems like a good approach.
All right, anybody out in the public that has comments or questions for Ethan? Nobody? All right, Ethan, are you all set then?
Uh, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ethan. That was very interesting and informative.
Yeah, thank you, Ethan, because it was a long process. Like he mentioned, we had the SUNY Albany students for a couple semesters that helped with the project, which really kickstarted it and got us going on it. A lot of community input, public input during the different things that the SUNY did, and then a lot of work with Ethan and the committee. So it's been a great project, and I'm grateful that it's coming to, to the point now where we're going to adopt it.
Yeah, I can say, Mayor, that is a testament to your efforts and the committee to spend three years engaged with the process that most people get burned out on. So kudos to you all for actually, you know, seeing this through and, and working quite hard on it.
Ethan, can I ask you one more question?
Yes.
Was there anything that surprised you going through this, that, that, you know, you thought that things might be different?
Surprising, wow. You know what? I think that the one surprising thing with getting started was how much Menance is actually doing already for such a small community. It doesn't necessarily jump out at you if you're not in it, but once you get in it, you realize that you're, you know, you maintain all these independent departments, your own school district. It's pretty impressive. And it's just such a small village surrounded by these, this growing region of cities and towns like Colony and East Green Bush and whatnot, so. Cool.
All right, well, hearing no further questions or comments, we will close the public hearing. It is 6:24, and now we will open up the regular semi-monthly board meeting. We need a motion to approve the April 20th board meeting minutes.
I move to approve the board meeting minutes from April 20th, 2020.
Brian will second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Don, you want to read the paper?
Yep, yeah, warrant, warrant number 23. General $49,014.68. Water, No money in sewer, totally $49,908.46. Payroll number 24, $96,305.80, correction, 38 cents.
All right, Don, can I just ask, are you on May 4th? Because those numbers aren't.
Yeah. Yeah, you got to correct the one, right?
All right, I must not, but that's okay, as long as your numbers are right.
That was, I sent those today. I emailed those to you today. That was the one from the other day that I sent you. The other one was wrong. Because she put more invoices in today.
All right, sorry. Okay, now you got payroll and transfers?
Yeah, I got transfers. Clerk miscellaneous, $1,000. The clerk contract sales, $1,000. Contingency account, $6,500 to contract engineering, $65,000, or $6,500, sorry. Building miscellaneous, building construction service, $5,000. Police overtime to part-time police, $1,500.
Outside contractors?
Outside, thank you. Outside contractors, $500. Building maintenance, $500. And that's it.
Diane, I don't, I don't think we can hear Diane, so if somebody wants to make a motion.
So moved.
A motion has moved.
Sorry.
And then, Eileen, you can second.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, the treasurer had advised that due to a typing error on the transfer sheet from the April 20th board meeting, the following resolution is requested. A resolution adjusting the transfer sheet from the April 20th board meeting as follows. Change account number A dot 3120 dot 0153 from an increase of $1,500 to an increase of $1,400 to reflect the actual transfer.
Brian, so moves.
Second, Seth Harris.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to move on the Comprehensive Plan adoption?
I'm, I'm fine moving on it.
I'm making a motion to move with the Village of Menance Comprehensive Plan. Thank you, everybody. It's been a long time coming, but thank you.
And thank you for that. I'll, I'll second that, Seth Harris.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right, last fall, Diane and I were having a conversation, and she had suggested that we try to expand on the American flags along Broadway to include Verrance River Boulevard, and now also Ward's Lane. There's also some on Broadway that need to be replaced. So Don got some prices for us for 30 American flags, include, they include the whole setup. Gettysburg for $1,290, Carrot Top, $1,710, Flag importer, $1,500, and these are made in America.
Amen.
So I move to, I move to grant, I move to buy 30 American flags from Gettysburg for $1,290.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Close. Diane said aye. She's texting me from, because whatever.
Is she on, does she need help? Does she need me to contact her to unmute?
I mean, you could text her, maybe. All right, so I'm not exactly sure how long ago, but it's been a while.
Yeah.
Started with the trains way back when. We had installed cameras on the bridge that show the railroad corridor. It has come in handy on multiple occasions. The police chief wants to repair or replace the cameras and put in two cameras, so one will stay focused on the railroad tracks and the other one will be on Broadway, so they can monitor things that are going on. The cost is approximately $6,300. And to me, we spent a lot of money installing them in the first place. I think it's worth it to replace them and not just have broken ones sitting there.
Meg, we also did get a second quote. I just got it. It was on my desk when I came in, so Frank must have dropped it off. But it was for $71.28, but they also have to have ABS work on it also, so it would still be cheaper with the ABS quote. And that was with Diagnostic Services.
So is the first, is the first quote still the better of them?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know where, what fund this is coming out of? Where the, where the money's coming?
I believe it's going to come out of, don't quote me on this, I believe it's coming out of the contingency account.
Yeah, we had talked to Dylan in advance, and he said that the money would be available for it.
Okay. So moved.
Second, Eileen.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Did Brian, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to, do I do this, Mike, or do I explain?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. In 2016, we had a, we did renovations to the main In two thousand sixteen, we had a, we did renovations to the main pump station, uh, the Ward's pump station. Um, a couple of weeks ago, a, um, the, the air handler that's in the, inside the, the, the building sprung a leak, and they shut the water off to it. We had Dwight come take a look at it, and the coil inside it needs to be replaced. We checked to see if it was under warranty. That's why I'm coming to you so late, because it took so long to go through to check to see if it was still under warranty. It's not under warranty. I tried, I tried calling, um, Pharaoh Brothers to see if they would come in and take, give us another quotes. I have, at least have one more quote. They have not gotten back to me. Um, so we have to, it's, it's going to take four weeks for the, um, the part to come in. So we need to, um, I'd like permission to have Dwight fix it. And it's going to be twenty-six hundred dollars for the part. It's going to take four weeks to come in. It's going to take about, it's going to cost approximately eleven hundred and fifty dollars for the repair. But it's, you know, it's, the unit needs to be repaired.
Anybody have any concerns, questions?
I guess, Don, did you, did you go back and talk with the, the contractor that did the work? Uh, I mean, this is only a few years old. Do we, do we at least try to leverage them in some way?
I, I didn't, because I don't even know who, I tell you the truth, I'm not sure who did, did the work on this. I, I couldn't go back and do that.
Yeah, was it, was it Stephen Miller? Do I remember that right? It's been a while, but Stephen Miller?
Because I came in, I came in at the very end of it. This is way when I, this was when I started.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't involved in this one either, but yep.
And I, and I'm not sure. And it was like, you know, because Dwight went back to the manufacturer and did the, did the legwork to see if it was still under warranty, and they said it was not, it wasn't.
Don, did Dwight give you any indication as to why it may have failed so prematurely?
He just, no, he didn't. He didn't, because they, they went through, because it's the coil. You know that, if you go in there, it's that big unit, and it's the, the coil inside that big air handling unit. So they don't have, they, he had no clue. It was just faulty, you know, just a faulty coil.
What's the typical shelf life? It's been four years.
Normally, I don't know.
I think, I would, I think at least ten years.
Should we do a little more investigating and, uh, try to reach, figure out who was that installed it and just get their opinion on it before we move on this? Or is it imperative that we do it tonight?
No, it's not. Well, it's just, I'm just, it doesn't, it's not imperative. It's just, you know, we're just going to need it before summer. It's going to take, because with the hot weather, it just needs, they just need it in there. But that, we can, I can keep, I can do a little more research if you want. I just wanted to let you more, more advise you more than anything else.
All right. So if you guys want to do, we'll table it for now, and then bring it up again at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that was Diane. Welcome, Diane.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Seth.
Been here all along.
My pleasure. It's all, it's all a learning, uh, learning curve for all of us.
Okay. All right. And now we're going to jump back to Ethan. Um, Ethan, you want to introduce Tim and, uh, give an explanation of the Soldier On project that's not on the agenda, but came up over the weekend, so we can move on that, or hear what the project's all about.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with the Village, Village Board, um, and the applicants at Thirty-Five Broadway. I know that, um, probably two months ago, um, the organization, Soldier On, and Beacon Communities had come to the village and presented a very basic concept of a apartment complex there. Um, and then recently, they have followed up with some more detailed site evaluation, and they wanted to come in front of the board and talk about their, you know, their proposed development there and some of the sequence of approvals that they're looking at. And I will let them speak for themselves, but I thought this would be a good opportunity for, um, you know, the Village Board and the applicant to sort of, uh, you get an introduction, have a preliminary review of the development that's proposed at Thirty-Five Broadway. So I guess I can, I can turn it over to, uh, Tim.
Let me know when you want me to present the slides, because I have, I have those.
Sure. So, so E- Ethan and, and, and the mayor, I don't know how far to say, we're, we're very appreciative of letting you, uh, giving us, giving us the time to be, present this evening. Uh, we have with our, with our group tonight, we had Duncan Barrett, the president of Beacon Communities, New York. We have the site, uh, um, site landscape architects and engineers, the LA group. We also have the project architect, who is three T engineers. I'm going to turn it over to Duncan and let Duncan kind of do a brief introduction about what the project is. And then, um, and then the LA group will talk a little bit more about the site, specifically the, the site plan that we're proposing.
All right, great, thanks.
Duncan, are you on?
He's muted. Duncan, you want to unmute your microphone?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Oh, wonderful. Um, so I, I'll try to be brief, and I'll ask our consultants to be brief as well. What we're proposing, um, is a housing project at, um, Thirty-Five Broadway, which is the parcel immediately north of the former Albany felt building, uh, now, uh, an apartment complex. Um, it, it was proposed is, um, a four-story building of, uh, I'm going to turn my phone off. I was on the call on my phone because I could hear better. Um, a four-story building with sixty-eight one-bedroom apartments. It's independent living, but it is, um, uh, set aside for, uh, veterans. Some of the veterans would be veterans who have been formerly homeless and come through, uh, Soldier On, uh, program. Uh, Soldier On is a not-for-profit corporation that, uh, provides through VA funding services for veterans in, uh, five states, including New York. They currently serve, uh, provide supportive services and counseling services to about four thousand veterans in the state of, uh, New York. Uh, Beacon Communities, the company that Tim and I, uh, uh, work for and that I lead, uh, in New York, um, is, uh, an experienced, uh, long-term, uh, owner and manager and operator and developer of affordable and mixed-income housing. Uh, we've done housing in Albany County that includes, uh, the, uh, twenty-seventeen renovation of O'Hav Shalom Senior Apartments on Cromwell Road, um, a hundred and fifty-three units in the south end of Albany, uh, on behalf of the Albany Housing Authority, uh, the redevelopment of Van Rensselaer Village and Water Belie. Um, so we, we've been, uh, involved in this market. Uh, I've been involved in this market, uh, for five decades now. And, um, we would be delighted at some point in time to, to show the village leaders, uh, some of our, um, local housing projects and the quality of the work we do, and importantly, uh, the quality of the maintenance and, and management we provide. Um, uh, this building will cost about sixteen million dollars, which seems like an absurd amount of money for sixty-eight apartments, but it is, um, what things cost at this point in time. Uh, we've done a thorough environmental review on the site. Uh, the site has had a number of uses over the years. We were concerned about a, a number of items, including the soils conditions, um, any, uh, hazardous materials, and, um, uh, and, uh, the noise factor from the railroad, which you've, uh, you, you discussed earlier, and, and, uh, all of those things came back satisfactory. Um, this will be independent living housing, but it will, uh, come with the supportive services, uh, for the vets that, that Soldier On provides. Um, exterior amenities will include a seating area, flagpole, a community garden, um, more than adequate parking for the number of cars that, uh, we will generate. Um, interior, uh, amenities will include an exercise room, a computer lab, gathering space, uh, a telemedicine, uh, uh, kiosk, so that people can afford themselves, uh, of the VA medical services, which is a long-term cooperative relationship between the VA and Soldier On. And, um, in terms of timeframe, uh, we have provided to Ethan, uh, a draft of our, uh, request for site plan review and special use permit. Um, electronically, we'd like to proceed with that. Uh, we're going to be seeking, um, uh, some capital funding, uh, from the New York State Homes and Community Renewal. We plan on filing that application in June. Uh, if we're successful with that funding application and successful with your review of, of the plans and the proposal, uh, we would expect, uh, to, uh, start site work construction early in twenty-twenty-one, uh, with occupancy about fifteen months later. In the context of all that, we'd be happy at this point in time or, uh, at a future time to answer any questions that the board or its consultants may have. Uh, um, and, um, I think I'll stop there and, and, uh, turn this over to the LA group to describe the site plan a little bit. Mike Ingersoll.
Duncan, uh, this is Mike Ingersoll. But, but the LA group, can you hear me? And, and if somebody can go through the slides? You guys seen?
Seth, we got the slides?
Yeah, I'm putting them up. Sorry. Uh.
You got it? You got it?
Yeah. Hold on, they're, they're on their way.
No.
I'll let you know when.
And can you not bang around?
All right, slides are ready.
All right. So, but, um, everybody, everybody, they can hear me. So, um, this is, uh, an image of, uh, really, the site text, and what we're trying to do upfront here is to marry fine guidelines that are here, uh, Broadway Business District. And, uh, we'll go over that a little bit. Basically, it's a two, two-point-four acre site.
Mr. Ingersoll, this is. Quarter, excuse me? Can you get closer to your phone? You're a little bit, uh, garbled.
Yeah.
Better, much better. Thank you. So I, all I have is, uh, this is the site context, and what we're trying to do upfront here is to.
What, what we're trying to show you is the site, size of the site, and then also, as Duncan mentioned, with the, it's used, uh, we require special use permit because it's multi-family. And what we're going to try to show you quickly, even though it'll come with more detail later, is the, uh, trying to comply with your, your Broadway Business District guidelines that have been put forward. I'm sure that'll all get married through your comp plan, eventual zoning. But I, I think what we're trying to do is split the building in and be one of the first ones to comply with that. So a lot more information here than we might, I need, but I think at the end of the day, we just wanted to show you where the site was. Go to the next image. There you go. Uh, just a rough survey of the two and a half acres. Um, one thing that's important, we think to understand is the site does fall away from, actually falls down quite quickly, and this will be important when we talk about the site plan, because it's a railroad, so everything that comes off of, uh, Broadway there, um, does pitch to the back. Oh, you'll see, and when, um, three T talks about the architecture, that we kind of have a, a, a split level site to deal with. Um, if we go to the next image, start to see how that lays out. The, um, what we've done is try and take the building, um, hug it to the street, which gives us the opportunity to have a front door, um, on, on the road with a streetscape, and also a sitting area, uh, for our tenants. And, um, really, we're on the, uh, CDT, uh, BRT route. So we think that, that ideally helps our transportation situation and brings the building and the streetscape forward. Um, the entrance to the site, currently, there are two entrances, one in the south and one in the north. You would come down off the street into the back of the property. So, uh, in your guidelines, there's quite a bit of talk about, um, trying to discourage parking from the front of the building. So all of our parking would be in the back. Um, on the parking, right now, we're obligated in the zoning, I believe, to have a hundred and two spots. We're going to earmark as we go through this. And the board, I believe, has the ability to waive this, but I'd like to provide about half of that, a little more than half of that, because, and we'll show you in more detail. Oh, down on the road with the project, most of our clientele does not drive daily as would in normal multi-family situations. So, but we have provided enough area for that parking to build should ever be needed. Um, as down off the property, as it mentioned, it's a little feat of great age. But, so we, we have a situation where the building wants to be the same height as the main road. And then as we come in through the front, uh, to the back, we have a closet as well, um, that would be slightly elevated to the park. This allows us to have, uh, a couple of sitting areas, one that would be around, and an entrance from the back. And, uh, and these are veterans. Also, kind of to the north, um, which is sort of a memorial, uh, sitting garden. So we have some amenities there. And the other piece that's a bit unique, uh, to the rear of the building, and the architects have talked about this, I'll talk more, is that we do have an area for a community garden, and there's a bike share, a bike storage area on the lower area, and it's also serves as our trash removal, um, within the building, so we don't haul that outside. Um, all in all, what we're trying to do is really put the building forward, present it on a site where it's, it would be part of the eventual streetscape. Order gets developed, take the parking to the rear and focus on our, our tenants and pedestrians. Now that, we have a long ways to go on the technical side, uh, soils, drainage, uh, water and sewer, but everything seems to be in place and working out, uh, for that. Um, we can come back to any of these, but really, next image is just the green up before we get into the architecture. This shows kind of where we'd be at the end of the day. This is in no way, no, the site to maximum potential. Well, uh, plenty of green space at the end. Um, a lot of people are bouncing. Most of it is the grading coming off into the site. But I think when Scott goes through the building, you'll see how the building turns nicely. That's pretty much it in a nutshell without getting. I don't know if you want to take, Eric?
Sure. This is Scott. I'm, uh, from Three T Architects, and we've been, uh, asked to, uh, work with the LA group and Beacon Communities, which are great organizations. We've been able to work with them before. So I just want to verify, can everybody hear me?
Yep, they can hear you perfectly.
Great. Um, so if you can go to the next slide, I'm trying to remember the order of the slides, if you don't mind, Seth.
This one?
Yeah, that'll be fine. I can do the, uh, a little summary of the layout to help orient you when you see the outside. Um, Duncan did a very nice job of explaining the, uh, ground view, um, but in summary, uh, that, it is a total of sixty-eight units. It is It is four floors and it is for veterans. They are all one-bedroom units. They do have support services. And what you're seeing, just to help you read this a little bit, anything that you see in gray is a residential or apartment unit, one-bedroom unit. The other areas are either corridors and walkways or stairways or elevators or lobbies. And also the support spaces, whether it's laundries, community spaces, exercise areas. And up towards the front of the building, which Mike was talking about, where we have something facing Broadway, which Broadway is to the left of the sheet as you're looking at it. That is a community space, exercise space, and some community rooms for both men and women. On the rear side, which is on the inside corner of it, of this building, is the entry from the parking area. And then they have a leasing office in that area. So I will be brief, so if we can continue on Seth to the next one. Right to the elevations.
You want a different slide? I can go wherever you want.
No, this is fine. I can do that. The upper floors, just so everyone knows, are basically the same configuration as you just saw on the first floor, except we have a couple more units. What I want to point out, and Mike hit on it a lot, is that we are meeting the Broadway District Guidelines. And what we're doing is getting the scale that is proper. Seth, if you don't, if you don't mind going to the other slide that has the elevations.
This one?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So what you're seeing, the top slide there is the, or the top drawing on that sheet is what is facing Broadway. And so that is facing the street. You see the smaller entry off to the side, which is where Mike was talking about, an entry, and I believe the bus stop is going to be there. And then what you're seeing on the bottom part is what you would be seeing from the parking lot. What we are doing is we're bridging a balance. We're trying, we're working within the guidelines, like we were talking about in terms of scale. And we are right next to Albany International, which also has a very nice scale and residential look. And what we're working on is bridging the gap between that and what you hope to be will be a commercial district, where all the parking will be in the back and the buildings would be towards the front in the future. And hopefully, we're the first one out of the block. If you go back up Seth to the one prior, the A6. Yeah. And just to help you out a little bit, the one on top there is what, if you were on the railroad tracks looking up the hill, you would be seeing in that, over in the corner is where the entry will be. And we're working with the LA Group and Beacon very carefully to get, you know, really nice sight lighting and nice landscaping and everything to transition and buffer everything into the building. As Mike mentioned in his presentation about the site, you can see on the rear property, it won't drop down. So on that elevation on the top, you can see where we actually have a walkout area, which is a basement area, which does not have any residential units, but it's where we can collect our trash, bring it out the back. We do have bike storage and some mechanical space and a little maintenance shop. So it's a nice way to use that area in the back. And that's where we had some of those community gardens and planting beds. The one on the bottom is what would be seen as you're coming and driving north on Broadway. And it's the one that faces Albany International's property. The thing that we're doing is we're working with the guidelines for the forums. But because it is residential, you obviously see lights on a lot. It's not a commercial building, so have a lot more occupancy 24/7. So you'd be seeing a lot of different lights on. But we're also using materials that, they're all fiber cement, proposed fiber cement materials at this point, which tends to lend itself much more residential. So we have clapboard, we have panels, we have a little bit of board and baton going on. So it'll come across as residential materials, but the scale obviously is a little more commercial. So we're trying to bridge that gap. And we want to really work well for the village. Obviously, we've got to work, we're working with Beacon very closely to make sure the program works and the budgets work. And it seems like we're on that path right now. But be happy to work with the village and any comments that we hear on what we're presenting tonight. And I believe that's, you know, pictures speak a thousand words, so I can keep it brief. And that's where we're at right now in this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody on the board have questions or comments?
I do, a little bit. One of the things I noticed is it looks like you only have four handicap parking spaces dedicated. Is that, do you think that's enough?
Actually, I think, you go back to that site plan, we're certainly, we're going to revisit that. But part of that, that might be the number of cars, ratio may not gone through when you identified user side, but we've gone by the code side. So we have enough for the code, but it may not be where our users need. It's a good, we love to revisit.
Is this the one you want? Which one?
That's the one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's only, along that flank, part of the issue is that's where we have the familiar is we can create a location or more or less flat unless we go out into the parking lot. Well, we, you know, as a team, that's something we should consider. So what's shown is adequate for building code, but maybe not for our users.
And we're actually proposing, I'm sorry about the echo. So we're actually, I guess I need Seth's technical advice.
What's up? What's up?
Well, I think we're, so we are proposing, we're proposing the, essentially, there's 68 units within the project. We're developing them as 5% would be handicapped accessible. So there's, there's four units that, apartment units that are ADA compliant, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. And that translates also to four units for the, for the parking.
Yep, that is the correct number.
And then my last question, you mentioned that there was nonprofit, is the, is an organization Soldier On. Who, who's, who will be the owner of the property?
That will be Beacon.
Beacon. And so is, is there a nonprofit involved with the owner of the property? I mean, how's, how's the title going to be held as far as the assessment role?
So this is, this is Duncan. The ownership entity will be a for-profit LLC that the not-for-profit will be a member of, a partner in, and Beacon will be the lead-in. We will have the financial obligations for maintaining and operating the property. And those will extend for 30 to 50 years. So it will not be exempt property. We will be coming back, Brian, and proposing to you a pilot arrangement because the income of our tenants is limited. Our income will be limited, but it won't be completely off the tax rules.
Super. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I don't.
Nope.
Looks like a good, nice plan to me right now, is what I've heard, from what I've heard.
And just, this is Eric, just a comment procedurally. Tonight, we're calling this the pre-application conference. We have received the full site plan application, I believe, that came in today. So once an escrow gets funded, we'll get in and commence a detailed review of that application and provide those comments to the board in anticipation for the, the next part of the process, which would be the preliminary site plan application.
Is there any action that needs to be done tonight? Or we're just, it's a preliminary presentation?
No action needed tonight. Tonight was information only to get the board to wrap the head around the project a bit. So no action needed for tonight.
So Eric, just, just as a question, I'm just curious in terms of, you know, we'll certainly get the, when you guys give us an estimate, we'll certainly get the escrow funded. What is the, you know, we submitted the long-form environmental assessment today. We got a special use permit that we need processed, that we need to go through with the village. I guess I'm just trying to understand where we stand with that process and what the timing of those two items specifically would be.
Yeah, my recommendation typically, you're going to want to go through the special use permit process first and get that approval behind you and then move forward with the preliminary site plan. That's, that's a good, good point.
So we, so we submitted the special use permit application as well today.
Okay, great.
So as, but we're trying to do a coordinated review with Seeker.
The, the special use permit will have, it's a standalone seeker, because that'll have a separate, a separate approval. So that, the special use permit will have a seeker, and then we'll do another seeker for the site plan.
Is it possible to do a coordinated review for both special use as well as site plan as well with, as well with New York State Homes and Community Renewal, our financing agency?
I don't know the answer, if there's any, any procedural reasons not to. Is there a concern from, from a timing standpoint on the village's end? Or I guess what's the, what's the concern?
Usually, or generally, either New York State Homes and Community Renewal will do their own seeker process, or if they're, if they're included as a, in the valid agency with a coordinated review. It does save time and process. And it involves them in the seeker process, obviously, from the get-go. And then we don't have, they don't have to do their own review later on.
Sure. I guess that's something we'll have to, have to look at if, if those two things can be combined. I think what you're asking is if the special use permit, seeker approval and seeker action can be combined with the remainder. And I guess, yeah, let me look into that.
Thank you.
All right, good. Well, it was an exciting project. I think from the comments of the board, everybody is kind of on board and we're looking forward to it to see instruction being started and finished. And we're grateful that you brought this project to Manans.
Definitely.
Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight. We appreciate your, you're getting us on the agenda to get this, this project started. And we look forward to being back in front of you very soon.
Great, all right. Thank you all very much for attending.
Thank you.
Formative stuff.
I don't know if you guys could hear it in the background when the fire siren went off. I'm just going to do a little plug for the village. But each night at 7 o'clock, we ring a solid 30 seconds of the fire siren in appreciation of our first responders and the essential workers. So we can take a minute to reflect and thank them for everything that they do for us. Something special we're doing here in the village and we're so appreciative of everybody, so.
Yeah, that's right.
That's great.
All right, so let's keep everyone in our thoughts and prayers. Did anybody on the board have anything else?
Yeah, Seth Harris here. I've, I delivered some, some face masks following what you, Don, and the Manans Police did in terms of delivering face masks to some of the senior citizens. I did that for some of the senior citizens on my street and throughout my neighborhood, and they were so appreciative. You may have heard from them, some of them directly. But they were, they're very appreciative to the village and for all that we did. And what I've seen even on Facebook, everything's just been so positive. People saying they wish their community was like ours. And just one of the many great things about living in Manans.
Right, yeah, it was definitely a good project. Glad that it was able to happen. And we got the face mask from Albany County and then Don and the chief secured them. And I made some phone calls to the seniors that are involved in the senior club, and then they delivered them door to door. So it was, it was a good project.
Thank you. Thanks for spearheading that.
Anybody else? No? All right, well, I think, Don, you didn't have anything for executive session, did you?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Our next meeting will be on May 18th, same, same way. Yes. Okay, I will, after we adjourn, I will send, send all the information. I'll send both the notice and the invitation to everyone here.
All right, Renee, we'll get that to you. And Renee, did you need anything else or are you good? I know the one communication was a little hard to hear, but.
Yeah, maybe if you can forward me the audio, just because of that one communication. But if you can't, I can make it through with what I had. But if you do, that'll be great.
I'll, I'll make sure you're, you get a copy of it.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, everyone. It was better tonight, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting, we're getting it down.
All together.
That's right.
All right, so if nobody else has anything else, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That was a good, good informative meeting on many, many levels. It was good.
Got a lot done in a short period of time.
Yes, absolutely. And I think the, the public hearing went well.